Conversations so that we can that we can move forward and get some resolution in in some way. And and I know you may think of other things even after tonight, prior to our boarding meeting next week. And I know that Chad and I were both would be more than happy to answer those questions as you think of them throughout the next few days. So just shoot them an email, shoot me an email as you think of additional things. But whatever you've got tonight, feel free to ask, and and I'm sure they're more than happy to to answer. So I'll turn it over to to Mr. Wazler.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, we've got some really exciting information to share tonight about the new layout. I know you can't see the drawings right now, but the drawings haven't changed since what we discussed a month or two ago, prior to putting it out to bid when we're here. So I'll kind of run through it real quick. What we've got right now is a new concession stand, new restrooms. I feel like I'm talking to the TV. And of course, the new press box along site paving, concrete paving, site lighting, underground utilities, as well as which include some drainage pipe, which will help collect a lot of the water runoff that used to run underneath the bleachers and make a big mess. So with that, is there any questions on the layout of the the site itself? Okay, well, we'll kind of keep going from there. As we know, we went and we scaled the project back from a two-story press box to a single-story press box. That in itself, and a little bit of concrete paving, we deleted. I'm excited to tell you all, we have saved about 1.6 million dollars. And I and I've got a a handout, I should have scanned it in for the people um that are virtual. Just kind of we'll run through it. So to help with this, I'm just gonna briefly go through each item and and then we'll circle back. So back in 23, we did the bleacher modification, which was 760,000 dollars. And then last year, we did the electrical building and electrical upgrades, as well as the visitor press box preparing us for this. That project was 2 million 32,000 dollars. One item we haven't talked about is there's going to be some construction savings on that project that has not been credited back to the district. That's going to be about 155,000 dollars credit. So I've I've listed that on this, as you can see. Phase three, the press box, concession stand and restrooms, along with the Plaza Underground Utilities, storm piping came in at 6.3 million dollars, with a grand total for construction activities of 8 million 967,000 dollars. As the drawing sit today.
And that's just from taking off one story on the press box?
Yes, ma'am.
And the stair tower too.
And we we took out a stair tower, that's correct, no one, thank you. We had two, one on each end, we did take that out. Little bit of concrete, not not much there. But basically, we took out one floor along with, this is a biggie, you gotta keep this in mind, we eliminated the bathroom in the press box. So there is no bathroom in the press box itself.
Is there one now?
No.
Okay. But there'd be one underneath the stairs. That they don't have to go all the way to the other side.
Yes, ma'am, as long as you don't take it out. So on the sheet that you may have received, did y'all get a text message?
I sent a text of the handout to everybody, so if you've got your phone close by, you should have that handout with all of the the figures on it, the numbers.
Oh, thank you.
Did y'all receive the text message?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes.
So with the design costs of approximately 700,000 dollars, the entire project right now is at 9 million 662,000 dollars. Without any deductive alters.
That includes a 155,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's this.
That is this. And just just so you're aware, the the restrooms themselves, some sort of. The women's restrooms include 11 stalls. The men's restrooms have four stalls and six urinals. So there's there's quite a lot of activity that can happen in that area. This includes the elevator, uh, which is not only required, but it's really exciting to think about our district being able to provide for the production crew and the sound crew. You know, some of these kids that may not be able to have gotten up there in the past, now they can be up in the press box as well. So wait, this does include the full elevator. So that's really exciting.
Do you know what the cost of the elevator is standalone?
Just the elevator, not the shaft, not the electric?
Well, the whole thing for the elevator.
It's.
That's what I figured, yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to know. What do you mean you don't have an option?
It's required by code.
If we do a remodel?
No, this this type of remodel it is, but if we use paint.
It's only required if the number of people exceeds 18 in the press box. If it doesn't exceed 18, we don't need a elevator.
There's a special rule for um press boxes. If it's over 500 square feet, you have to. You are correct, it's usually trimmed out the square feet.
Okay. So any questions at this point of of what the project consists of?
How many people will that press box hold per that design right there?
Uh, a lot, yeah.
What's a lot?
At least 10 per room.
So is it, how many rooms is it divided into?
It's five rooms, so we've got a head coach's office, a home radio, a film, the score room and production. How many, how many coaches will you have?
You'd have anywhere from six to eight, depending on how many wants to put up there.
Just in this one room here, radio, I think you'll have two.
Are they divided by a door or just a walkway?
There there's a wall and then here's your common corridor hallway. Each room has a door going into it. And then the front is all glass and then this section from here to here, and each one is glass. So you can, when you're in the coaches, you can see right through to the far end and vice versa, all the way down through.
Okay, somebody's gonna have to help me understand the necessity to have glass in between them.
So you can see down the field.
This this guy.
No, I mean in between each room, why do you need to see the person next to you?
You got the whole field down here.
I understand the fit, the glass in the front, I'm talking about the glass in between me and you and you and you.
If you wanted to see from the far left all the way down to that end zone, you'd have to lean out the window so the glass.
You'd stop right there, you would be able to see anything past that right there, you'd be looking in a wall.
If I'm sitting here, it's my line of sight going like that versus if there's a wall here, I wouldn't be able to see because the field is.
Isn't isn't there a wall there right now?
This.
Yes, there is a wall there.
Yes, there is. There is, but our press box, the rooms are twice as deep as what we currently have.
So so that's the back right there, that long corridor is the back, yes.
Yes.
So that you come up the elevator, you're in that, and then you go into each individual room. And you can't, you can't be in that room and look left or right and see the entire field without looking through another glass, another room?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Think of a 100-yard field.
Well, I'm thinking of a a building, if I'm in a glass building and I'm looking left and right, I can see as far as my eyes can see. I don't understand why you can't see the whole field, both directions. So if I go into a solid glass building and I'm looking at the river, I don't have to look through another side of the building to see the left side or the right side of the river. I can see in front of me and the left and right, I guess I don't understand why it's situated where you can't see the entire field from in that room.
I think I think the answer to that, if you were standing at the window, you could, but there's an upper level here, an upper tier where you could sit additional coaches. And so for them to see all the way down to the end, that glass would have to be there so their line of sight would be able to go all the way down the field. But if you were up against the window, you you could, you could see each end of the field. But if you're seated back in that room on that upper section, then you would not be able to see all the way down the field if those areas were not glass. That make sense?
Yes, that does, but it it still seems to me like that wall, oh, the glass, the wall's glass too, you said. Okay, so you're seeing the glass wall to that other end, okay. Okay, you can go on, I'm done with those questions.
It's a good question. So we have these raised ceilings, so you have multi-levels in the press box for each each room. These are steps, you've got two steps up, so you're about 16 inches higher here than you are there.
Yeah, I get that part, it's like being in a movie theater, some are up higher and some are lower, yeah, I got it.
Just on a flat floor. Okay. Any other potential questions? Current design? We we are, this this project does include quite a bit of civil rework that is catching a lot of the runoff, which is is really a good idea. So I'm sure a lot of you have seen the concrete ditch that you walk next to. So we're, we've got quite a bit of drain line running through here, it's gonna tie back into it. So we shouldn't have as much, and with the concrete paving, we won't have as much water coming through here going underneath, filling that concrete ditch up with mud and dirt and growing grass. So some of the things you don't see when when you're just thinking of the press box building, tremendous amount of underground water lines, sewer lines, we've got a a fire hydrant line here that's tiring into our sprinkler system, a new remote FTC for the fire trucks.
We got a new fiber line coming from the high school.
New fiber line, thank you.
You said it's all underground.
That's all underground, that's what, yes. So as we were talking a minute ago, currently with everything in the project, including design, we're at 9 million 662. If you elected to accept deleting the concession stand, we can delete 449,000, almost 450,000 dollars, which brings us down to 9 million 172,000. If you wanted to move on and delete the restrooms, you can delete 431,000 dollars, which brings you down to 8 million 741,000 dollars.
Is that the total project price, including all the things that have been done already, or is that an 8 million dollar one one-level press box?
No, that's total project where we're at, I'm I'm sorry, Jeff, that's a great question. The original price for this press box, phase three, is 6 million 329,000. So these numbers I'm giving you will come off that.
So it'd get us down to around five, a little over five, to build a one-level press box with an elevator, 5 million dollars. If we didn't do, if we didn't do the other stuff.
Yes, sir. Now, I I would like to add, it does have all the site lighting, the concrete paving, all the underground utilities, the storm drainage, quite a bit of fence as well, some wrought iron fence, and the the fiber, which is extremely expensive. It also includes the concrete slab for the restrooms. I don't recommend this, but I felt I should at least explain it. If you didn't want to do the restrooms ever, you can delete these, most of the site utilities and the concrete slab for the restrooms and save another 194,000 dollars. And I say I don't recommend it because if you do that, all the site concrete paving, everything through here, you ever decide to put those restrooms in, you're gonna tear it out.
That's gonna be costly.
You'll double. I think the restrooms are very important. One of the items when we originally started this project was the coaches, not only from football, but from soccer and from track, asked that we put restrooms in the press box because they get stuck up there and they can't leave. So we did that in the first design. We've taken those out now with the understanding that they were thinking there was gonna be restrooms below them. Otherwise, they're trying to run to the indoor or to the public restrooms and fight the crowds along with the rest of us. But I really do not recommend taking the out the the concrete slab, the plumbing and electrical, just for the matter of the rework, if you ever went back and did it.
What about the concrete, if we held off on the concession, you still had to bust all that up, you did it later day?
No.
Or could you access it?
We would, I would put some con expansion joints right there, we might have to take out a little bit. But we would put in expansion joints where we didn't bond together and then it just pull right out.
So you could delete the concession stand, but keep the restroom in that concrete slab in there? And that'd save you about 450,000?
Yes, ma'am.
How big is that concession stand?
Pretty good size, that's a, that's a great question. The concession stand is not only just a concession stand, but it it was drawn in to have the booster club building in one end, the little red barn we've got out there. It would go away and they would move into this end right here, which has an overhead door. Just comes counter height, so it doesn't, it's not full height. Overhead door there and a man door, but overall, it's approximately 47 feet by 15. It has a storage room and a janitor's closet as well. It does have a TV showing to be in it that would be tied to the scoreboard. So what would, whatever's on the scoreboard would be on the TV system in the concession stand.
But the TV doesn't come with this prompt.
No.
It's just, the plug-in does.
Yes.
Okay, the electrical.
And that's not equipping the concession at all at the end of this?
That's correct. But usually Coke or Pepsi's gonna supply those coolers, whoever does your.
Damn, you're Coke.
I hope you stayed up.
I don't care.
Hey Chad, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And so would we still have the concession stand on the far side along with this smaller concession stand on the home side?
I I would assume so, but that's kind of a district question. When we originally started this process, it was my understanding, and things change, Ben or Jeff may be better for this question, but it was my understanding that band was going to still run the concession stand they do now and the sport sporting group or a booster group was gonna run the new concession stand. So it didn't put all the pressure on one activity to to man that.
Okay, thank you.
But don't, don't take my word on that, that's kind of y'all's call.
Right.
So this concession stand is gonna be smaller than the other one?
Yes, ma'am.
The smaller version.
Yeah, that's that's a big concession stand.
Yeah, it is huge, yeah.
We'll have a walk-in freezer like the one down, the one, the one we have now has the walk-in freezer.
Yeah.
Uh, well, my two cents worth is if we're gonna go this route, I would definitely put the restroom in. That's my my thought process, at first, I thought it might be good to leave them out, but I think just cost-effectively wise, what's another 431,000 dollars you're spending? Eight million. And then you're gonna come back and double that, getting rid of the concrete you just laid down, if we decide three years later, two years, whatever the case may be. Uh, the concession stand, I talked to some, a few people that's on the uh concession stand that works it and mans it. If they're gonna have to, someone's gonna have to man and supply all that as well. So whoever's in charge of it, it's a whole different ballgame on that. You know, you're gonna have more admin down there to watch that area. A resource officer's gonna have to go down there quite a bit or stay down there, you've got more activity down there. Uh, that's just kind of my thought process on it, and I would, I don't know if I would wanna take that away from the band because they've had it for so long, and then if you have like football booster to do it, then you got two organizations working against each other and trying to compete for the same people. Uh, I'm just afraid, but that's something we can talk later, it really had nothing to do with money, that's just kind of spitballing as we're going here.
I I would point out too that, you know, while we received several bids for this project, the the low bidders, the ones that would get this job, 99% of them are local. I mean, that that says a considerable amount about who's doing the job. Uh, you've you've got people like McNeely Plumbing, you've got Roy's HVAC, you've got Valley Electrical, you know, two of those have their names on the field as well, you know, so they spent a lot of money. You've got Kirby, you've got Rustville Steel, Smith Vance, I'm sure Bowden Specialties. You know, all these are local companies that have supported the district too. So I I think it's really important that we we realize who the people are that that went after the job.
I appreciate that, Chad. I also know that we've got a serious decline in enrollment, and that's something we've got to look at too. I think we lost 186 kids last year, and so from the financial side, we've got a, I think we all have to take a deep look at that.
Well, I also think we need to look at, some of the other buildings need to be fixed, you have the roof, junior high, gardener, special services. When you talk about some major projects there too, those have kids involved there and London, the walkways. Those are some major projects we need to look at too with kids. They'll be impacted greatly by that if we don't do it, and we look at how much those are gonna cost too. Maybe we can get some of those local companies to bid on those projects also.
I I I think they would for sure. We have a very good community.
Well, they've always poured back into the the kids, you know, your local businesses have always been, a lot of it, we don't always see.
Does anybody else have any more questions, or Chad, I already, y'all have anything else to add?
I think we made some some really good decisions on reducing the size and bringing the scope down. You know, and right off the top, deleting 1.6 million dollars is is a sizable chunk, it's it's nothing small. Um, and then if we did take the concession now, we're looking at over 2, 2 million dollars that we reduced this, the project. But I think that was really good on y'all's, y'all's part.
He's not here, so do we know how many like soccer coaches, track, utilize that concession stand, I mean, utilize the press box? As far as numbers, yeah, I know the football program is probably a lot larger and there's a lot more people up there because you've got people filming and, but did you have that with soccer and with track as well?
I don't know how many coaches, but you still have the operating crew that has to operate the, you know, the games. So we still.
In the past, for soccer, the kids filmed, coaches were on the field, they don't have any more coaches than what they had in the past. They won't be, their kids will be filming up there like they had in the past, that's about it.
You know, when this project originated, the band had lots of interest because of their their band contests, marching contests, and how they scored them. But the press box that we have right now was inadequate for them.
So a lot of those different schools, like if there's a contest, they have the the different people from the other schools go up there?
The way it was described to me was it had more to do with the judging of people that would occupy the the press box for that event as far as judging goes.
So how does the band feel about the fact that they're not gonna have a spot in this? Because you know, we originally, when we started looking at this a couple of years ago, we had a spot for the band just for the band, I mean, we were planning that in the entire project, so.
We were talking about that today, and the original group that had input to this, they designed the band stand. And then we had a changeover, and I'll just be honest, they they could decide, one, if they wanted it, and then where they wanted it. So we could wait on that, so we just deleted that for now.
There's a full design for it to go right here. But the previous band director, he he was instrumental in how big it is, how how wide it is, where the instruments went, so it could be added at that spot at any time because the design's done.
Is that in front of the electrical building?
No, it's it's way, it's way down.
Or on the other side?
No, it's still on the same side of the field, but it's kind of more down towards the corner of the track, the track makes the bend right there, it's way down here. And they really liked it, there was a sidewalk that would tie into this concrete, the site paving, that you'd come up the hill and tie together, so all of the parents could walk by, everybody was lit. But you could add it anytime with the way things are laid out.
Yeah, what I remember is the new band coach.
Well, band shrink into, I noticed that this year, that shrunk off.
I think Mr. Dev was awful, if I remember right.
Yeah, a lot of input.
Yeah.
He did.
You know, my, my thing is being a band parent for several years, he was very instrumental, a lot of things that went on for band. My king did a great job at being the director of the band. And the band people, you know, when, I know that a lot of people come to see the game, but a lot of them come to see their kid play in the band.
The cheerleaders or.
Or the cheerleading parents, yeah. But a lot of, I mean, a lot of the band parents are there all the time.
And, and the other thing was they liked sitting by.
Beside them, yeah. Yeah, I, I think we had a lot of pushback when it was separated because the parents wanna be right there where their kids are.
Well, I've been both. I'll, I'll take off my construction hat for a minute and put on a, a parent hat. I've had a son that played all the way through and we sat in the middle. And now I have a daughter who's a, uh, flute and is a majorant. And we said, oh, we're closer to them, but they were excited about the, having their own place that's lit where their instruments are wet.
Right, that cover on it, yeah.
One day, in the near future, when we're really good, you'll need that area for all the parents to sit as well. But I go now to watch a, a band, which I never thought I would. Which, so it's kind of exciting, something different, something new.
I, I personally like to see the band separated because then you can focus on them. And, you know, a lot of schools now have, the band has their own little section that's covered and, you know, you can look over and see them. But I don't have one that's playing in the band either, so. Not anymore, I already did that.
Well, I've been in, I've been here less than, uh, town than anybody in this room. Uh, so everybody here can speak in a much more educated way than I can about all of those things. Uh, but I know this was a sizable project and, uh, what I wanted to do was, was ask Chad and Ira to work to bring something a little bit more financially feasible, uh, so that you all could make a good decision, and we do have, uh, projects on the horizon, but I wanted you to be able to make the best decision possible with the most information possible. And so I appreciate them coming tonight to answer any questions, I know you may have additional questions throughout the week. So don't hesitate to send those, ask those, and we'll get those answered, um, so that we can at least provide some resolution in our board meeting next week. Any other questions about design or drawing?
I think it's good, I appreciate you taking time and working, getting the cost way down.
Thanks guys.
Thank you Chad, thanks for getting the cost down.
Oh, you're, you're very. I think you guys made a great decision on, on reducing the scope, I think it's, it's really a nice project.
All right, looks like we'll have you something decided next week, thanks ma'am.
Thank y'all for zooming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, bye.